Thank you, I would like to call the June 4th Regular School Board Meeting to order. And at this time, I would like for all of us to pause for the invocation. As we gather this evening, I ask this board to be mindful of the business we are about to undertake. We are thankful for everyone in attendance this evening. Further, we are grateful for the opportunity to govern and the freedoms that we enjoy. We pause also to remember students, faculty, faculty members, families in our system and our community who have faced many challenges during this past month. Our positive thoughts are with this group. As always, we seek wisdom to make the best decisions for the students and the citizens of Davie County. Peace be with you. At this time, we have a very special treat. We have the Girl Scout Daisy Troop 2148 from Bethlehem United Methodist Church. Ms. Amanda is their leader to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Music) "The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We thank you so much. And ladies and gentlemen, that's why we on the board are here, is for the children. Now I need a motion to adopt our agenda for the June 4th meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt? Wendy makes the motion. Do I have a second? Chad makes the second. All in favor of the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chairwoman, I have a, I'd like to ask that we amend the motion, the agenda, and divide the resolution up in the Action Items or Business section into three separate resolutions. It deals with teacher assistance, school board, Senate Bill 236, and vouchers. I had asked, I'd sent Dr. Hartness an email asking to do that, and I'd also sent you an email, and you said that we'd discuss it today. But I'd like to amend the agenda to three separate resolutions.
Actually, I think we can deal with that when you get to that on the agenda item. I don't think you have to amend the agenda to do that.
Okay, so we're fine? We can talk about it then?
You're fine with the way the agenda is, but when you get to that item, that would be the time you break it in.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay. When I sent you that email, I said we would discuss it, and that was in reference to when we come to the business item, when we go into the discussion of business items, that's when we discuss it. And that's why I sent that email back to you in reference to discussing. All right, we have a motion by Wendy, second by Chad, to adopt the agenda stated. All in favor? Seven zero. Now I need a motion to adopt the minutes of our regular meeting of May 7th, 2013. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting? To approve? Paul makes the motion. Do I have a second? Carol makes the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Seven zero. It is approved. Next on the agenda are important dates. And I don't know about the board, but I know from my standpoint, looking at the dates for the summer meetings is wonderful compared to the pages that we've had during the school year. It is amazing to understand that on Friday is the last day of school, and Central Davie Graduation is also on Friday at 11:00 a.m. here. On Saturday, June the 8th, we have graduation at Davie High School at 8:30, with a reminder, and we hope it does not rain, but if it does, on Sunday at 2:00. A very special activity will take place at the First Presbyterian Church of Moxville, a reception honoring Hank Van Hooij for his 38 years of service to the Board of Elections. Also, we have several North Carolina School Board Association meetings going on in June and conferences. We will move our July, the meeting, our board meeting, to July the 9th because of July 4th. The July 9th board meeting will be at 4 o'clock here in this room. I think the Board of County Commissioners are meeting July 15th, I believe, 17th. Oh, the 17th for budget in June, right? Right, okay. I have special things to say thank you to the Davie County Early College High School Graduation. That was very impressive. We have enjoyed the retirees' reception. That was wonderful. The advisory meetings at Davie High School, Early College, and Central Davie Academy, partners' reception, the arts mark was out of sight, and all the D.R. graduations. I want to thank the board members for attending and being a part of those, and I know you've been busy the month of May, but we really do appreciate it. And at this time, I am going to turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would say thank you to the board for all the events that you have attended on behalf of all of our students and staff this month. It's been a busy month. May is always a very fun month, too. We have a lot to celebrate. We have a lot of great recognitions here tonight, too, but I want to update you just on a couple items before we do those. Quick update on the Board of Commissioners meeting last night. The Board of Commissioners voted 3 to 2 last night to hold a school bond referendum in May 2014. I'll provide the board a copy of the resolution once I receive a copy of that. I think the chairman was coming over today to sign that. I personally am disappointed that three commissioners denied the people the right to a vote for yet another year, assuming the bond would pass in May 2014. That denies our students another year a right to be in an updated facility. But we have a solution to address the issue, and we're going to continue to educate our citizens and community about the successes and the needs of our school system. The Board of Commissioners also set a budget hearing last night for June the 17th at the courthouse. I don't have a time for that meeting yet, but when I do, I'll communicate that as well. As you know, board, we requested the same amount of funding as we requested the last several years. The summary I attached to my update on board docs this afternoon, when I received that from county government, calls for a 2% reduction to all outside agencies, and that includes Davie County schools. Outside agencies would include Davie County schools as the largest, but it also includes like the Coolome Historical Association, Davidson Community College, Davie Campus, the Arts Council, some recreation, vocational rehab. Those are other outside agencies that are funded by the Board of County Commissioners. A 2% reduction in county funding to Davie County schools is $189,000. We hope that the Board of Commissioners will not reduce our budget by $189,000. As we find out more, we'll come back with you. We may have to discuss things that we might have to eliminate next school year, or further staff reductions. We did not anticipate a decrease in local current expense funds for next year. As far as moving to the state level, there's a lot of disagreement right now in Raleigh. A lot of things going on pretty quick. Right now, we think that the House will release their budget this weekend for review. Next week, it will go through the process of being approved, and their goal is to have a budget from the House side adopted by June the 13th. The next steps will be, there will be a conference committee that is assembled between the House and the Senate to try to come to some type of agreement on a final state budget. So I would encourage you to watch your email for updates from the School Boards Association, and I'll provide updates as well. There's one House bill that we've been watching. House Bill 944 passed the House Education Committee last week. This is a voucher bill that would divert public money and public dollars to private schools. Those dollars could eliminate the discretionary reduction we've had the past several years, could restore positions to public schools. And I find it a little discouraging that in one chamber, they're proposing doing away with half of the teacher assistance in North Carolina, and now we've got a proposal to use public dollars for private schools. So I continue to question the agenda and the priorities of the General Assembly right now. So we're a little ways from a final state budget, but I'm concerned about bills such as that. So let's switch for some better news. A few weeks ago, I announced to you that Davie County High School and the Early College were two of 73 schools in North Carolina, recognized by Newsweek Magazine as one of America's best high schools. We were notified that U.S. News &amp; World Report has given Davie County High School a silver medal and included them on their 2013 list of best high schools. So I think that's some great news. When they reviewed 21,035 public high schools across America, Davie County High School was one of 104 in North Carolina that were recognized. So public education is working in Davie County. It's working in North Carolina. Our students are receiving a quality education, and they're prepared to succeed in high school and beyond. And I want to congratulate all of our students, staff, and our community for this national I want to thank those of you who were able to attend the Early College Graduation last Saturday. It was a wonderful event. I'm really looking forward to graduation at Central Davie Academy on Friday, and graduation on the football field at Davie County High School on Saturday morning. We're hoping for good weather, aren't we, Mr. Wallace? We're about to wrap up another school year. It's amazing, and I want to thank all of our students and staff for their hard work, for all the people in our community who support public education, support Davie County schools. Davie County schools is a family, and our family takes care of children. And our work takes place in the classroom. I tell our staff that all the time, and we will continue to keep our focus on taking care of children in our classrooms. That's what our focus really should be about. So in spite of recent activity by politicians, that's what we're about, and that's what we'll continue to be about. So I wish everyone a great last few days of school, everyone a restful and safe summer, and we will be back at it in August. That's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. It has been a great school year, and our faculty, staff, and students in the community have given 200% as always. You don't have accolades like this unless you've got everyone working together. And I too am very sorry for what took place last night, but I was very pleased to see the community to come out in support of their school system. That was heartwarming to see children and faculty, staff, parents, grandparents, retirees that have no children in the system. They are standing up for education, and I deeply appreciated that. At this time, Dr. Hartness, do you want to do the foundation for?
Thank you. Like to ask Ms. Jane Simpson, our Executive Director of the Davie Community Foundation, to come forward. We are blessed in Davie County. I will tell you, in other school districts that I've worked in, they would be extremely envious of the work of our foundation and the support that they provided Davie County for the past 25 years. And tonight, or this afternoon now, I get used to saying this afternoon instead of tonight, we have Jane Simpson. And Jane's going to talk to us a little bit about the work of the foundation and their recent announcements and scholarships and awards and grants and all the other great things you do. Welcome, Jane.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity just to update you this afternoon, and I also want to say a personal thank you to all of you for your support of the foundation. Many of you were there Friday evening. I can project if I need to. I have three sons. I know how to be loud.[851.01][851.01](Laughter)
I'm just here to update you on things that the foundation has been part of for schools and students in the community. And the first of those that I'd like to talk about is our scholarship program. We now, at the foundation, administer 42 different endowed scholarships, and those were established by people within this community to support students in this community forever. You might be interested to know that four of our alumni classes have started scholarships. The Davie High Class of 1959, 1962, 1963, and 1976 have started endowments, and they're awarding scholarships each year. So if any of you are part of those classes, feel free to join in with that group. These are former students of our schools supporting current students of our schools, and I think that's really a special thing. This past May, we had 58 high school students and 13 college students who are residents of this community who were awarded scholarships. This year, we were pleased to award $84,645 to students. And as the foundation celebrates its 25th anniversary, that brings our number of scholarships administered under the foundation to more than $440,000, which I think is tremendous Thank you, but you really are applauding yourselves because that is citizens of this community helping young people. So congratulations, community. The second thing that I want to make you aware of is that we have an anonymous donor or donors at the foundation who wanted to offer dollars to teachers within the school system to do projects that are not part of state or federal funding, and as budgets get cut hourly, it seems. These were welcome dollars. We sent an application to teachers and immediately had a response for projects. This fund is called the Three Musketeers Fund, All for One and One for All, and it awarded very rapidly $5,315 for 17 projects that they received requests for in all of the schools. And they happily are going to refuel that fund and contribute again, and that will be available again for next school year. So it will hopefully add some enrichment and creativity into the classroom. Finally, I just want to mention the sheet that I gave each of you, and I'm sorry, this is not a handout, so you all can't see it, but in our 2013 competitive grant cycle, which is the money that comes from our community funds, we had 17 requests that totaled a little over $97,000. 10 of those requests came from the school system, from the various schools. And we were able to take our community funds, our Children's Reading Fund, and the Innovators' Fund to make grants, but we also sent that sheet out to our donor-advised fund holders, and they responded in partnership with us to add dollars for those grant-making opportunities. And so of that $97,000, we were able to award $89,000 of those dollars. And to you all, that translates into reading and science camps in six elementary schools. It's a Ready for the World, I'm not sure how ready for the world they really will be at South Davie, but that's a summer camp that they're having this year. It's iPads for speech therapy at Central Davie Preschool, and funds for the STEM Pipeline. So of our competitive dollars, 68% of the money went to Davie County Schools projects. So we are pleased to be partners with you in doing good things for students. This fall, you will see out in the community that we will launch publicly our 25th Anniversary Five in Five Community Impact Challenge. That is a challenge to raise $5 million over five years in true community funds that can be used for projects such as this. When that is successfully completed, we will have an additional one quarter of a million dollars annually that can be used in the community for projects such as these. So they are, we think, the most important funds for the community. Our board has discretion to use those dollars to meet needs, and so when you hear that come out in the community and see that campaign, I hope you'll remember these things that those dollars were used for, and you'll choose to be part of that to make a greater difference in this community. Thank you, Dr. Hartness, for allowing me to update.
Jane, thank you, please. That was, you're wonderful, and the foundation's fantastic. Thank you. Now it's time for our student and staff recognitions. First up is Elizabeth Phillips, Exceptional Children Related Services Person.
Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Hartness, I'd like to introduce to you tonight our Related Services Person of the Year, Ms. Amy Farr. She was an honor student in Syracuse, at Syracuse University, advanced degrees from Michigan State. Did move south and stole our hearts and our respect. She's a skilled diagnostician, school psychologist, communicator. She works tirelessly with school teams to design interventions for struggling students. One of her principals referred to her endearingly, remember this, in two different ways. One, he said she was one of his two favorite New Yorkers. Now, I don't know who the other one is, but one of two. And the other, he called her the silent assassin.[1242.23][1242.23](Laughter) What Amy does, and this is just so true, she works behind the scenes for students, with the teachers, doing, getting, gathering data for the principals, data for the school, whatever you need, she'll get it. She does the job well and never wants any recognition for it, so this is probably hard for her, but never wants recognition, so I think that's why he called her the silent assassin. She works, she does the job well, and we are so thrilled to have her. She's an excellent member of our staff. Amy Farr, thank you.[1282.58][1282.58](Applause)
Amy, on behalf of the board, we present you with this certificate, and thank you for your dedication and service to Davie County Schools.
Dr. Hartness, I'd like to add something about Amy. She's got a beautiful singing voice, and she's, if you've never heard her sing, you're
Dr. Hartness, the board, it's my privilege, and the audience, it's my privilege to be able to recognize Davie County Schools Administrator of the Year. And before I start sharing a few things, would I like for Ms. Erin Foyle to please stand up and join me? Ms. Foyle is a graduate of, she has a bachelor's, earned her bachelor's in 1999 from Converse College in Spartanburg with International Business Computer Science. She also earned her master's degree from UNC Charlotte, I guess it's Charlotte, I have the extra C there, I didn't spell out Charlotte. In 2001, she started to work with us, with Davie County Schools, as a Technology Assistant Secretary, right? In 2002. And as I sat with Butch Rooney today, we labored over, all right, how do we say, how do we define what she has done as we've evolved and migrated from SIMS, our Student Information System, or Student Information Management System, into NCYS, and now getting ready to go into PowerSchool? And Butch and I just kept trying to find the right word. So we settled with evolved, and that, I don't know that that does it justice, but I oftentimes make fun of Erin because I see her vehicle here and how late she's here. And I told her one night that, obviously, her vehicle must be like a horse, and it knows its way home at night in the dark, because this lady is always here. Erin has, again, was started out in our Student Information Systems, and now is Director of Testing and Accountability, which position she took over in 2011. And as for a few comments from folks around and just some things, Erin's work performance goes above and beyond expected, what is expected of her. She has enormous responsibility and still manages to keep a positive attitude. And many of you sitting in this audience, I see a lot of our staff, can testify to that. I don't know that I've ever seen her bend out of shape. I actually, I'll give you a funny. I walked through today, coming in, and she was laughing, and I said, "That is awesome to be laughing." Our testing accountability person to be laughing right in the middle of testing, and her first thing out of mouth was, "But we found Jesus." I said, "Well, great."[1468.58][1468.58](Laughter) And then we talked, she said, "No, no, 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 we've been looking for this student."[1473.41][1473.41](Laughter) She said, "We found the real Jesus, too, or we wouldn't be laughing right now." I said, "I got you." So it was good for them to be laughing, and again, a lot of you in here are familiar with testing. You clearly understand how that can be unusual and very difficult. But Erin, of course, we'd like to congratulate you to the many things you've been involved with our county. As I mentioned, the student transfer, the Student Information Systems, the MEVAN Challenge and part of that initiative that you were part of, and you do wear quite a few hats, but they're all very, very important, and we are very pleased and very proud and very honored to have you as a Davie County Schools employee. So just a simple congratulations here, and thank you very much.
I know I'm presenting this on behalf of the board, but I want to take just a minute here to share a personal story, and Erin knows I'm going to do this, I know she does. When I moved here 29 years ago, this little girl and her wonderful family was the first person I met. They lived right out my back door, and she and my kids played together. She spent the night at my house, my kids spent the night at her house. And I could have, I didn't know where she was going, but I could have told you, this is where she, it was going to be something this high, where she would excel at whatever she does, did. Her mom used to come tell me, I had a totally different problem with my little friend, my daughter that's her age, but Erin would go out at 3:00 in the morning and make sure her homework was in the car, ready to go the next morning to school. She would check to make sure it was done and ready. I wish I could proudly say that about mine. Mine was like, oh, well, I hope I've got mine done somewhere. It's somewhere. But she's, she is an amazing person, and we are so fortunate in this school system to have her. So it's a real privilege for me to stand up here and present you with this.
Jackie White and Angela Langford, the North Carolina Positive Behavior Intervention and Support.
Thank you for having us here. I'm Angela Langford. This is Jackie White. We are here to recognize eight of our schools who are implementing positive behavior intervention and support. As stated from the DPI website, the vision was for all schools in North Carolina to implement PBIS as an effective and proactive process for improving social competence and academic achievement for all students. And we are so happy to say since 2005, we have worked with these schools, and they have been tremendously implementing PBIS in their schools. And what that does, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, it really is a way of life in your school. It is all about the character and the respect that you show each other, and the way that our students and our teachers interact with each other, and the way that they carry themselves. So we're very proud to be up here and recognizing all of these schools.
There's three levels of, I guess, awards that the schools are able to get from North Carolina Department of Education. One level is the Green Ribbon Level. That's the basic level that they award PBIS schools who have just started the program and have really taken a hold of a school-wide implementation. And then there's the Model School Recognition, which is kind of a middle level, which means you've stepped it up, you have school-wide implementation, and you're able to bring a little more to your 5% of kids who might be a little higher need than some of the others. And then there's the Exemplar Recognition, which means your school culture, everything about your school is PBIS and positive behavior and interventions, and that you're working with all the levels of students that you have. So we have all three of those to share with you today. The first one is Kristy McDougall from Coolome Elementary. Yeah? These folks are the coach, the chairperson, the leader of PBIS, and they work on a lot of data and behavior supports and parties and rewards for our students as they do well in testing and for other things as well. And so we'd just like to give a reward to Kristy. From Moxville Elementary is Stephanie Nagel and Billy Joe Wild. This school was recognized this year as a model school. We think they're going to be exemplar this year. We felt like they were last year, but we know for sure it's coming, and they work very hard with Ms. Mars on PBIS.[1784.33][1784.33](Applause) Next is our newly proud dad, Justin Markell from Cornats River Elementary, whose wife just delivered a baby very recently. delivered a baby very recently, and he said he hadn't had a lot of sleep, so give him a little, you know, encouragement. Cornatzer Elementary is a model school, and he works with Angela Langford at Cornatzer to provide PBIS for their students. Jennifer McPherson from North Davie Middle. Don't think she's here today, but Ms. Custer is, who can accept that award, just another Jennifer. North Davie Middle School, working under Mr. Ms. Custer and Mr. Brooks, has received the Green Ribbon and are working toward model school status. Kelly Crosby from Pine Brook Elementary. Kelly has worked with PBIS since I have from the beginning, and she does a great job at Pine Brook. They're a model school, also could be modeler exemplar for next year. Christine Orgnon from Shady Grove, or Ms. Gildine. Ms. Gildine has been in PBIS as long as I have as well, and she and Ms. Orgnon work very hard at Shady Grove and are a model school this school year. Amy Specken from South Davie Middle School. Amy has also been in PBIS with me at South Davie for a really long time, and she is fabulous, works so hard. They're the only school in the county that have exemplar status. They have worked on PBIS since its inception in 2005, and we are just thrilled with their Angela Spielman from William R. Davie. I will say Angela's the most fun to work with with PBIS. She and I've had some interesting data things going on this year. Their school has received Green Ribbon recognition for the first time this year, and we hope they will be model school next year. We will soon.
Thank you. That is a wonderful program. I remember when it started. Next, Danny, Dr. Danny Kertner and John Marshall, our robotics.
Good evening, board members, staff members, members of the community. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize some students. Why don't all of you come on out? We're here today to recognize students who were the elementary and middle school champions in our robotics competition. And rather than spend 30 or 45 minutes trying to give you a taste of the flavor of that competition, we did put together about a 30-second video for you to see a little bit of what happened on that evening. So, if we can queue up our video. We did have 83 students who participated on our final night. You will see a picture of all 83 of them when, when our video starts. They filled up an entire section of the bleachers at Davie High School, so lots of students and lots of teams. We had about 34 or five teams. The elementary teams were in a double-elimination tournament, and the middle school teams were in a round-robin tournament, and we came out with an elementary championship team and a middle school championship team. And then those two went head-to-head with each other and ended up with a grand champion. There's everybody. This year, robotics focused on literacy as well as the engineering and math and science. We spent the entire year with the book, The Wizard of Oz, and students wrote challenges based on the book. We wrote challenges in our office, and then the students solved them. And along the way, they developed a lot of those skills that sometimes get referred to as soft skills. Really, there are a whole set of interpersonal skills that we need to function as teams and to work with one another and to get through that design process that's part of engineering. So, many congratulations to all of our students. They all developed those skills and demonstrated growth as well as increased academics through the year. Our winners, though, let's start with our elementary winners, and they are the Panthers team from Shady Grove Elementary School. They already have their certificates. They are Jared Falk, Ty Kelly, and Bailey Stewart. Abby Sloan was also a member of the team. She wasn't able to be there at the competition, but she contributed all year and therefore is, is a member of the team. our middle school champions, who eventually just edged out the Panthers to become the grand champions, are the Four Amigos from South Davie. And they are Sierra Foster, Jacob Juarez, Andrew Lawrence, and Justin Bordwijn. And hiding back there, not hiding entirely, the Four Amigos were coached by Mr. Rogers and Ms. McLamrock, and the Panthers were coached by Ms. Delayed at Shady Grove. Congratulations to our winners.
I just want to say real quick, on back, on behalf of the board, congratulations. And there's not many things that I miss about school or that would make me want to go back to school, but this is one of them. If you've ever experienced it, we got to go one night just as a, just playing around, and I ended up playing more than my kids did. So, it's a really great program. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hartness, Madam Chair, School Board members and audience. I would like to invite you to join me in congratulating the Sabretooth Tigers team from South Davie Middle School of 2012, 2013. These students competed against other teams from across Region Eight, also known as the Southern Piedmont Region. They competed against private schools, public schools, home schools, Montessori schools, schools that have a great deal more flexibility with their time than we do at South Davie Middle School. They finished seventh in the region, which qualified them to go on to the state. At the state, they finished 25th. This may not sound that remarkable, but when you compare them only with other public schools, we finished second in the region and fourth in the state. At the state Envirothon, they were very pleased to have that experience, so I'm glad we went even as a seventh-place team. I'm very proud of these students for the time and effort that they've put into Science Club and into the Envirothon competition. So, please join me in congratulating these students. The only one with me today is Skylar Hunter Willis. She is the sixth-grade representative on our team. Come on out, Skylar. These students competed in the areas of aquatics, forestry, soil, wildlife, and current environmental issues, and it really did require a lot of studying. The other members were Toby Barker, Elena Burr, Joslyn Ruiz, and Jennifer Nego, who are all eighth graders. So, I'm very proud that Skylar was here with us, and when I talked with the others last Thursday, they promised me they would be here as well. But thank you, Skylar, for showing up for this.
Share with them real quick about your camping trip during all of this.
The state Envirothon was held on a weekend when there was a great deal of rain on a Friday night. So, we traveled to Graham, North Carolina, to a park called Cedar Rock Park, where we intended to camp Friday night. So, they went through an afternoon of learning some things from some speakers that were there about the various subject areas. And as we were out to supper that evening, having already set, set up our tents, a great deluge hit, and we came back to find that the tents were very wet on the outside, and mine in particular was flooded on the inside. So, Mr. Whitaker jokes that I was even willing to float the rapids on this trip. The next day dawned bright and sunny, and the competition was held on a beautiful day, though a little bit cooler. We thoroughly enjoyed it. Some of the students said, "Ms. Brown, this is the first time I've ever gone overnight with a group." And those same students who were so proud about going overnight got to go on the band trip to Busch Gardens a week later, and they were really looking forward to not having to worry about rain on that trip. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Dr. Hartness, and members of the board. It is with great pride that I report that career and technical education student organizations have been very active this year at Davie High School, in our Davie County community, at the regional level and at the state level of competitions. CTSOs are an integral part of our program areas. Students work within their classroom and then continue to do other projects outside the classroom as well. This year, we also added a new student organization at Davie High School. That is the National Technical Honor Society, which is a organization that is, that recognizes those honor students and students that maintain certain accomplishments within their program areas. So, tonight, I'd like to start by honoring and recognizing our HOSA program. So, if Ms. Paul Allen and members of the HOSA organization would come forward. Davie High School HOSA received a couple of awards as a club this year. First of all, they received an Outstanding Achievement Award from the North Carolina HOSA for their participation in No Kid Hungry Share Our Strength for collecting 491 pounds of food for Davie High School Hunger Fighters. They have also received recognition from the American Red Cross for sponsoring three blood drives since their last conference and collecting a total of 280 units of blood. So, we're very proud of their accomplishments for the blood drive and hunger drive within our community as well as their other accomplishments. Our students tonight, we would like to recognize Caitlin Howell. Caitlin, step forward, please. She's at work, okay? She's not here. But Caitlin placed first in medical terminology. Lauren Taylor, Lauren placed fourth place in sports medicine. Also placing were Alexis Albrin and Elizabeth Holland, who placed in medical math, and this is on the regional level, and Laura Barney, who placed in medical terminology. So, I'd like to congratulate each of these students and Mrs. Allen on their many accomplishments for HOSA for this year. Next, I'd like Ms. Mrs. Amanda Hines and our Pro Start team to come forward. Pro Start is one of those courses that we have at Davie High School that serves a lot of people, serving a lot of people in many ways, including serving our, and preparing food for our retirement banquet that we had recently. Ms. Amanda Hines and her team competed at the Carolina Pro Start Invitational. Now, this was the Carolinas. It was North Carolina and South Carolina, so it was more than just in our state. And our management team, Isaac Dunn, Abel Martinez, Ashley Starr, and Miranda Williams, placed second in the management division for the Carolinas Pro Start. We're very proud of Ms. Hines and our Pro Start team. All right, now, if the McNights and the Skills USA members will come forward. And I say McNights because we have two McNights, the McKnight Brothers, Matthew and Mark, who are teachers for our carpentry and masonry programs at the high school. This year, these students competed at the regional and state level. And I'd like to also add that I'm very proud of our two teachers in this program because as Dr. Hartness and I, we were at the state competition, and we look around, and here are our two young teachers, both in their second and third year of teaching, and they're out judging and organizing and helping to keep the competition alive and working well and functioning very smoothly at the state level. So, very proud of them as well. So, first of all, I'd like to recognize in carpentry, Colton Oral. Colton was a fourth-place competition winner in carpentry. Amber Myers is not with us today, but Amber is our non-traditional student, a female, who placed fifth in the state carpentry competition. So, we're very proud of both of these folks for their, their hard work in the carpentry Arturo Morey is here with us, and Arturo placed fourth in our region for Masonry I. Charlie Farrell placed first in our regional competition. So, regional, right? Okay. So, we're very proud of them. So, proud of all of our teams and their great work that they've done this year for carpentry and masonry. And you probably have also recognized some of the work that they do out in our community as part of the community that I mentioned earlier. They also, as part of the masonry program, completed the foundation for one of the Habitat for Humanity Houses this year. So, very proud of them for that. We have one more group, our FFA. We have Jessie Ledbetter and Karen Farrell, who are the sponsors of our FFA chapter at Davie High School. From our FFA today, we have with us Valerie Keriker, if I get it right, right, Keriker, who placed third place in our region for, first place in the region for Dairy Handler, and third place for the state as being a dairy handler. So, we're very proud of Valerie. And we also have with us today the members, part of the members of our horticulture team, and they have, again, placed third place in our region, and they will be competing at the state conference later in June for their state competition. And the members of the Horticulture Plant Identification Team are Victoria Tally, Erin Mang, Alex Perry, and Taylor Sheets. So, we're very proud of our Horticulture Department and the many accomplishments that they have made this year through our community and plants and different competitions and things that they've provided for us. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Gender Odyssey of the Mind High School.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Hartness, staff, and guests. I would like to begin by calling up any members we have from the Davie Odyssey of the Mind team, as well as their coach, Reverend David Smith. I want to talk a little bit about their journey. I know you were introduced to these folks a few weeks ago. And then I'm going to let Mr. Smith come up. This is really only the second year that this team has been in existence at Davie High School. And they started this year at the Northeast Regional Tournament at Lake Norman High School, where they placed a close second in their division, right? Second at that one, right? I just want to make sure I'm right. That secured an invitation to the state tournament on April 6, which was held at East Carolina University. And there, they placed in the top three in Division III, dealing with Problem Three, lots of threes there, in Architecture, that's hard to say, the musical. And seven students, along with their coach, really geared up at that point to travel all the way to Michigan to represent Davie High School in the world finals. And we were thrilled to get news back that they placed seventh in the world. And again, this was in the world finals at Michigan, and it was again, Problem Three, Architecture, the Musical Division III of the world competition. There were 58 teams, again, from the U.S. and all over the world. And these guys came in just behind Poland and Singapore. So we were thrilled. This is an awesome accomplishment, but especially for a team in their second year. So at this time, I'd like to ask for the coach to come up. And if you want to recognize them by name, or you want me to? Okay. All right. Rachel Baker, Melanie Pacellas, I hope I'm saying her name correctly. I struggle with that one. Morgan Fuller, Joshua Lancaster, Noah Magdenell, Hampton Smith, and Brooke Summers. Please join me in congratulating them. This is an awesome accomplishment.
Madam Chair and the board, I came about a month ago saying we were here. We had a goal of raising about $10,000. I'm pleased to announce that the community came together and we raised well over $10,000. We paid for our trip, but we also reserved seed money for next year. And what next year looks like will be up to the future. We are hoping that, of course, this team, they've got it in their blood now. They want to go back. But we hope that another team will form, and that this can be an opportunity. I want to share with you a little more of the gravity of sort of what we faced within our Division III Problem Three worldwide. There was about 1,300 teams that were included in this problem. So if you begin to break this down, we actually came seventh out of about 1,300 teams worldwide. As Dr. Hines talked, we were representing North Carolina, but we were competing against 32 states, also 12 countries. And she mentioned Singapore, China, Hong Kong. Just a wonderful opportunity of how this team came together. Odyssey of the Mind is a program that I'm reminded in the first grade I was chided for coloring outside the lines. One thing I've realized with Odyssey of the Mind is that it does no good to stay within the lines when the problem is outside the lines. And this group of individuals, this team, they came together and they began to solve a problem that was, it started outside the lines. And they were judged on that problem. They also got a taste a little bit, and I had to make a confession when we came in seventh, which was great, and just being there was wonderful. The competitive spirit sort of kicked in, and I said, well, we left a few points there, and we left a few points there. And oh, by the way, we could have actually come in second or third, or, you know, maybe even of one, had we done just a little more. I think that's our challenge, and that is a challenge that we, as a county, we continue to face and look at. How can we not live on our laurels, but begin to improve with each and every day? So we do appreciate the support of the school board, the support of the Community Foundation that was here earlier, the Meven Foundation, and then there was just tons and tons of individual businesses and individuals that came together. Brent Schoeffe, in particular, he made three or four batches of pimento cheese. We raised close to $1,000 selling pimento cheese. You know, that's Davie County, and that's what we're working with. But that's who these seven, these seven students, they represented Davie County quite well. And so we're very proud of them, and we look forward to next year and the opportunities. So also, I want to encourage, you know, I think maybe I've given some lip service to the idea. I really want to get together with whoever I need to get together with and make this, or at least discuss this, as an integral part of the educational offerings for our county. Because I applaud STEM, but this is the A. This is the artistic side. And I do want to close with one problem. Next year's problem. In this classic problem, teams will recreate a king's court from history and make their own royal court set in an original kingdom at a different time and a different place. The historic court will issue a decree that fits in with its history, while the team-created royal court will issue a decree that changes an everyday behavior for the people of the kingdom. The historic court will be composed as the team wishes, but the original royal court will be made up of a leader, a minstrel that performs a song while playing a team-created instrument, a jester that makes fun of the leader. The performance will include puppets and a puplet, a person portrayed as a puppet, and will be scored for humor for a budget of $125. That's our problem next year. I invite you all to begin your solution of that problem. But I will tell you, you must stay outside the lines. Thank you.
All right, Wendy, you want to go first? Can I just say something real quick? I want to thank David Smith. I always hate to follow him because he is so articulate, and he speaks so well. But appreciate all that you've done for Odyssey of the Mind. I should have known I was in trouble in the first grade because I was so proud of myself for staying inside the lines in coloring. I thought that was what I was supposed to do. But anyway, thank you for taking that group of students so far, and we're so proud of them.
I know one of our goals is to be nationally recognized. I think we need to move it to be international after that trip. That's fantastic. Great job. Jeff?
All right. David, let me just say thank you again. David and Hampton actually started or came and knocked on the door and said, can we do this? And you see where we are today. And I think that's just obviously an effort of yours, and this wonderful group here, and Ms. Hines has continued with that. And that's, I bet no one else sold pimento cheese to raise money, didn't they? That's, we're probably number one in that category. It's my opportunity to recognize some more of our students. But I don't know that Caleb Mathis, Elena Passero, and Anna McBride are any of those. I don't see any of those here. But anyway, let me, again, Caleb Mathis is a senior at Davie County High School. Caleb was the regional champion in the boys' 110 high hurdles. Anna McBride, who was a former three-time state champion in cross-country, is a senior, placed fourth in the regional meet in the 3200. And Elena Passero is a junior, placed third at the regional meet in the girls' pole vault. These athletes also qualified for the 4A state track meet that was held on the 18th. And I'm not quite sure how they turned out. But once again, I know all three of these folks, they're wonderful students and fine young men and women. So please join me in congratulating those three.
That's the part of this meeting I really do enjoy, is watching everyone who have worked so hard to be recognized. We do appreciate everything, from the adults to the children, to the sponsors, to the teachers that you do. Thank you from all of us. Now on the agenda, it is time for the Consent Agenda Items. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented? Paul makes the motion. Do I have a second? Steve seconds. Is there any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, I will call for the vote to approve the motion for the Consent Agenda Items. All in favor? Seven zeros. Consent Agenda Items have been approved. Next is our, hang on, I've got to move over, our business item. Our business item consists of a resolution in opposition of the proposed legislation. I believe we had a discussion in reference to this, several of us, as far as just emails back and forth. How do we want to handle this?
Well, I think you can entertain a motion to approve the resolution, and a motion to approve the resolution in any form you want. I think you just open the floor for discussion.
All right.
I move that we divide the resolution into three parts, dealing with the teacher assistance, Senate Bill 236, and voucher bill 944. I'd like to vote on them separately. I think they're three completely different pieces of legislation. Two I support, one I'm opposed to.
Is that in the form of a motion?
It is.
All right, that's a motion. Do I need a second? Paul seconds. Is there any discussion in reference to this motion to separate?
What's the purpose of separating, and two, the second part of that is separated into three instead of, I guess I see two, as far as the actual resolution, I see two things here.
Well, we're dealing with, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're dealing with two pieces of legislation, Senate Bill 236, and I guess it's House Bill 944, which I support both of these bills. But the cuts to the teacher assistance as part of the governor's budget, and I believe the Senate budget, I'm opposed to that. And I do support that part of the resolution. You know, I have all the confidence in the world, the public school system. I believe we've got wonderful teachers in this county. We've got wonderful principals, assistant principals, the folks that deal with teacher assistance, the folks that deal with our students every day. But in the end, I personally believe that the parents can best decide how to educate their children. That's my opinion on that. On Senate Bill 236, it's a situation, I'll say upfront, that I believe that the people certainly have a right to vote on this new high school. And I believe on May 6 of 2014, they'll have that opportunity. But I see that as, if that fails, then I see it as an opportunity that we can give the people of this county the end to the high school. If it passes, then we'll build a high school. If it fails, then somebody needs to move and renovate that high school immediately. And, but that's my reasoning for dividing it into three separate motions.
Get a little clarification, so it would be clear what the resolution would say. And I sort of see Clint's point about two. There's the provision that resolves to oppose the legislation, including 236 authorizing counties to assume control over property. That seems like one idea. The second part of the resolution is to oppose legislation funding vouchers or opportunity scholarships. So there's only two parts.
There's something in there that deals with the budget and the teacher's assistance.
Well, it just says teachers and teacher assistance are important.
The way, I guess the way I would read it, Steve, is that you, there's two issues. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the rest of the board here, but there's two issues that we're saying in this resolution that we would oppose. One of the issues is the SB 236. The other issue is legislation, it doesn't spell out here, 944, but that is one bit of legislation that is dealing with vouchers and this opportunity scholarship that that bill is called. It would be in opposition to that. But what I see is above that, I see points that are laid out that if this legislation, if you believe, basically there are points here that would be affected if these two pieces of legislation were put into law. And I think if you believe that if these two bits of legislation were put into law, that they would negatively affect the comments or the bits of this resolution that are laid out above, to me, you'd vote yes for this resolution. If you don't believe that these two bits of legislation would negatively affect the comments that are above in this resolution, you'd vote no, or oppose this resolution.
I don't see any action, there's only two actions proposed in the resolution. So I can't break, I'm trying to figure out how you would even break it into three pieces, but I can't imagine.
Well, my concern is, if I vote against this resolution, that the teacher assistance and the teachers, the people in the classroom are going to feel that I'm opposing them. You know, the Senate bill is a, Senate Bill 236 is a facility bill. The voucher bill is a bill that gives an opportunity, whether it be to go to, to help fund a student going to a private school, if the parent feels that's what's best for them. So my concern is, you know, and we can do it in one motion, and I'll vote against it. But my concern is that I don't want the teachers, the principals, and the teacher's assistants in any way think that I'm opposing them. You know, so, but it's up to you all.
May I share one thing? Okay, so the public will understand what we're talking about. With the original resolution that I asked for Dr. Hartness to work on, it clearly has three parts as far as three groups that it affects. One, 236 affects us as a board. It takes away our right to function as a school board where it comes to facilities. Number two, the voucher issue takes money from public education, gives to families to go to private schools. That indirectly affects the budget, well, it affects directly the budget where we are doing teachers, teacher assistance, support personnel. We still have to do our job as public educators. So the reason I asked Dr. Hartness to put all three on this in that statement, two main, but with the third, how it affects, is to say that this board supports public education. And that's, and I understand where you're coming from, Steve. I understand that you want to say you support the TAs, but you also want to say that you support 236 and 944, the vouchers. We understand that. And that's why I sent back your email, so that we would discuss it. So I think, I hear Chad, I've heard you, and Clint's question was pretty good. And Wendy, you wanted to say something. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine. I mean, I was just saying, the way I am interpreting that is, as you said, that any money that would come as a result of someone taking voucher money affects the bottom line of the school system, whether that be teachers or teacher assistance. And so I guess, I guess if I were looking at breaking apart the resolution, it wouldn't really be breaking it apart. You'd almost have to do a whole separate one in terms of, maybe in terms of relating to the governor's budget and how that is, you know, maybe...
That was the request in the beginning.
Okay. I think it's just a, to me, it just seems like a sort of a misunderstanding in terms of how the resolution is. But now that, I mean, that's how I interpret it. I understand what Steve is saying. And, you know, maybe at some point, we would need to do a resolution, you know, in terms of what the governor's budget is implying as far as production and teacher assistance. But I don't... But I don't see this resolution pertaining to that.
I would agree with that. That's kind of where I was headed. I don't... I see, to me, if there are two parts to this resolution, and then if you read it, and then at the end of the day, there are, what, three or four items that if you would oppose this legislation, you would believe that those three or four items would be negatively impacted. If you agree with this legislation, you would not believe that those three or four items would be negatively impacted.
Well, and just from a legal standpoint, the whereas is aren't what you're actually saying. You're actually taking action on the second two items. That's why I'm saying I'm not trying to break it into three parts. Because what you actually... The whereas is are the preliminary statements. They're not what you vote... What you're not... You don't take action on the whereas is. You take action on the resolution itself, which is where it says resolved. And that's why I said there's really only two things you're taking action on.
But the last paragraph of the resolution that we will be voting on does mention retaining teachers' teacher assistance, support positions, and resources to support instruction.
Let me read that for you. And the Davie County Board of Education opposes any proposed legislation that would fund vouchers or opportunity scholarship for private education that will divert funds away from public schools for the purpose of retraining teachers, retaining teachers, teacher assistants, other support persons, and resource to support instruction.
Change the wording and take the... What is... It says here is the purpose of that diverted money.
But that's what the funding is. That's what funds do. So you can't separate the two.
I think if you agree...
You lose funding, you lose support of this. I'm sorry that that's a connection.
Well, you also lose the student, too, when you lose that funding.
You may lose the student, but you still have to provide the service to everyone that's there.
That's right. And where we are... Look, let's vote on whatever we're doing. I mean, in my opinion...
Let's first...
Whenever you vote on this, you're unfortunately, you're telling where your support is. And I hate, you know, the way your vote tells that. This wording doesn't have anything to do with that.
We had a motion on the floor by Steve, seconded by Paul, to split this motion for TAs 236 and 944 into three separate motions. That was what's on the floor, correct?
Yes.
Three separate resolutions. Was that correct? Okay. Has everyone had time to discuss to say? All right.
My question would be, do you want to pull that off? Do you still want to have a vote on that, breaking it up into three?
I don't have a problem with pulling, not voting on it, if we want to reword it in the Senate Bill 236, voucher bill 944, and that we support the teacher assistance. And we do not... I do not support this. The Senate bill, the Senate budget and the governor's budget that cuts teachers assistance.
Well, I think...
Yeah. We just need to vote on this first motion. All in favor of Steve's first motion to split? Please raise your hand. Two, all opposed. Five, motion does not carry. Now I need another motion to accept the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Chad makes the motion. I mean, I'm sorry, Clint makes the motion. Is there a second? Chad seconds. Is there any more discussion on this?
Madam Chair, I do have some things I'd like to say about that. I do not support 236, Bill 236. I think we have a great system of checks and balances by having a Board of Education and a group of county commissioners. The county commissioners, we have been to them several times over the past few months, and they have indicated that they are very much on overload. They have a lot to do, and they certainly do. I spoke with a gentleman last night who felt that the county commissioners had a better feel of the community. The community related better to the commissioners than they did to the Board of Education. That may be, but the Board of Education relates to the school system and to the teachers and to the students, and that is our role. I think that's very significant. And I don't think we need to be turning the facilities over to the county commissioners in light of, particularly in 21st century schools, where you have the curriculum piece and the facility piece need to be very much working hand in hand. So I am totally opposed to that bill. On the voucher piece, on a national level, I am not really opposed to vouchers in some scenarios. I think there are counties in this state, there are counties across this nation, that a voucher may be something that their county, their local Board of Education should be given the privilege to make that decision, what is best. I don't think that is true for Davie County. I think we have outstanding schools. I don't think we have failing schools. And I don't think that the vouchers, if I read it correctly, are going to actually go to the appropriate students that they are designed to serve. They're going to go to the students that can already afford to pay for student for private education. The amount of money is a small amount of money given to a family to help them pay for either a private school or homeschooling. Because if you are homeschooled, then one parent is staying home and not working. So I don't think this particular system, while on a national level, it may be something that they need to look at, in county by county. But for Davie County, I absolutely don't think it's the best thing for this county. So that would be my response.
I'm not absolutely sure what the formula is, but I believe the voucher bill that's been introduced is based on income, based on whatever... The lower the income, the more money you get. So it's based on students that would have a more financial need.
I thought it came to $4,700? Oh, $4,200 is the max, is what's in the line.
This is kind of off, but just to get a... I mean, I don't even know, because, I mean, my family has not explored it, but I mean, what would tuition be at a school in our area, like, say, a private school? I'm just trying to get a feel for how much?
$15,000.
$15,000? So for a family that may be getting $4,700, you're looking at $4,200. You're still looking at a tuition. So I know what you're saying, Carol, but I don't see how for a low-income family anyhow, and I just don't see how that would benefit.
And it may down the road be something, as I said, that we may need to look at. Education, certainly, I think we can all agree that there is room for improvement in public education. And I am all for parental choice. I think parents who can choose anything that they want for their child. But I'm just not sure that this particular voucher system applies to our county.
Right.
And I also think that the people who, in our county, ironically, who would benefit from this the most, would be the people who don't really need... Who can afford to pay for their children to go to private schools anyway.
Sure.
So that's what I would say about this one, as it pertains to Davie County.
I've studied through this, and I wrote myself some notes so that I could say these things tonight. A couple of you have said some of the points that I already wrote down here, but I want to go through this so that it's on record that I've remembered to discuss it or to make these points. I believe that Davie County School offers a superb, comprehensive educational opportunity that attracts parents and teachers. We've had evidence tonight of the awards and the degree that our school system has produced, and I called Dr. Hartness last week. In the business world, there is a thing called an end product. In this business world, the end product is the graduating student or a recognition of a student who achieves a certain accomplishment at any level. I believe that Davie County Schools has proven its educational services has an outstanding track record of providing and getting excellent results. I believe that Davie County Schools will not experience significant outflow requests by parents and students, regardless of what happens with this bill. I am in favor of parent choice for educational opportunities. So I am not in favor of this 944. The second piece of this, as I studied through it and believe it's a piece of this resolution that should be separate, is that I do not believe that North Carolina funding... I think the state of North Carolina is in trouble, and they're looking for ways to cut budgets and save some money, and they have chosen, in their wisdom, to eliminate some teacher and teacher aid positions. I'm not in favor of that. Davie County Schools and other systems, I think, I believe this is correct information, have shown the added value of provided by state-funded TA positions. And I don't think it's teachers, it's TA positions that are involved. I understand finances are tight in Raleigh, but cutting TA positions is an inappropriate place to reduce expenses. The savings by cutting this financial support would certainly affect the historical productivity and ability of our system to produce its end product. And I don't use that word, end product, like people are things, but you understand where I am with that. The third piece of this is I'm against this 236 for Davie County. 236 may be a wonderful thing in the place where it was designed and the area where it originated, but for Davie County and maybe others, should not be lumped into a group of other LEAs experiencing troubles that warrant such restructuring for whatever their reasons. We are an elected board by the people of this county to own and to manage these facilities. We are an elected board with the responsibility to maintain or to provide and maintain adequate facilities. We are an elected board, the current majority, that has a proposed solution that should be the... We have a proposed solution, and we should be the responsible Board of Education that has an alternative solution should that bond fail in May 214. That's the reasoning why I agreed with Steve originally about the three pieces. When I'm reading this resolution, I'm seeing these three areas in here. The wording bothers me the way it is because it's only pointing to two, and it's lumping two of these areas into one section. Clint asked Steve earlier, what's the three pieces? What are you seeing there? And why would you want it separated into three pieces? I do not believe that the county commissioners should own school facilities. I think the people in the county elected us to provide adequate facilities and to manage it. There may be a system somewhere where that's not appropriately being handled, and that's the reason for 236. Why Davie County is in there, we didn't decide that, nor what any of our doing. I am not in favor of the state targeting TAs as an area of fixing the funding situation. I am in support of this voucher program because where this voucher program can help people in their communities, I shouldn't vote for it or against it for their community. Why should they, as a statewide thing, vote for it in our county? I do not think that Davie County will experience significant outflow of students or funding in our area, so it makes no difference. That's my opinion. I'm done.
As far as the voucher statement, we're saying it as it would pertain to Davie County. Or are you saying... Are we... I'm just trying to clarify what...
Is it not statewide?
It's statewide, but are we saying as...
It's statewide.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I don't... I guess I don't think by supporting a resolution that... I mean, because your best interest, truthfully, is Davie County schools. So, you know, if you don't think it's good for Davie County, then you need to be supporting this resolution.
I believe you said it wouldn't hurt Davie County.
But he said he'd... Well, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I guess maybe I'm just... Maybe I'm getting confused, but...
Yeah. Well, what I would say is, yeah, Paul, to your point, you don't think it would hurt Davie County. I think probably the... Maybe the... And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but what I would see is, are we going to lose students from this? No, no, won't lose students. But what's going to happen is, the students that are already gone, the way I understand it, they could take advantage of... Is that not right? Of this tax credit or however this is going to be handled?
Based on my understanding of this bill, if a student is entering kindergarten or first grade, and they've never attended our schools, they could take advantage of the tax credit if they met the eligibility requirements financially, which I think right now are set at like 133% of federal poverty rate. The bill also says that if you must, if you're not in kindergarten or first grade, if I'm understanding this correctly, that you must be enrolled in a public school system the prior semester before taking the tax credit. So you could see some students who are currently enrolled in private education come and enroll in Davie County for a semester and then leave, so that they would qualify for the tax credit. The tax credit is a credit that would divert revenue toward the state that could be going toward maintaining the public schools of North Carolina.
And that is how it can affect us, because it's going from the state. Okay?
Dr. Hartness, would you remind the rest of the board and me the vote that was in Raleigh that was roughly 50-50?
The vote in the House Education Committee, to best of my recollection, was 27 to 21.
I had a conversation with Dr. Hartness, forgive me, I think it was last Wednesday, and gave me some information that I could go to, or some resources where I could go and study this a little bit. My comment immediately back to him again, when I first heard it without studying it, my comment was, if a group of elected officials in Raleigh are sitting and discussing, for whatever their reasons, whatever their intentions are, and a vote is made, and the division is so near... What did you say? 20...
27 to 21.
27 to 21, that's near 50-50. If those people who know way, way more about this than I do are that torn between the right and the wrong of it, it sure is incumbent upon me to pay attention to that and try to see that there is a way bigger issue than I can figure out. And who am I to sit here in Davie County, a rookie on the board, and sign on to a resolution that says one way or the other? Sorry.
We talked this out. I'm a representative on a Davie County school board, and this resolution, or the Senate bill and the other thing, is no good for Davie County, and that's why I support this resolution. I can't worry about other counties that have it. For Davie County, this is a bad idea, and that's where we are, so...
I would like to read the resolution. Whereas...
All I was going to say is I don't agree with that, but I'm ready to vote. So I don't see why we keep discussing it and why we're going to read the resolution.
All right. I'm going to read the resolution, and then we will vote. Whereas North Carolina general statutes prescribe the powers of general control and supervision of school systems are to be vested in local boards of education, not county commissioners. And whereas public school placement, design, and maintenance are the integral components of control and supervision authority that local boards of education have been statutorily assigned, and whereas to maximize efficiency and maintain supervisory powers, local boards of education must continue to control basic powers of school property ownership. And whereas duly-elected officials, local school board members must continue to discharge their duties and responsibilities for the citizens of North Carolina, and whereas state funding for public education has been reduced over the past several years, resulting in fewer staff working with children and fewer resources for the classroom. And whereas teachers and teacher assistants are an integral part of ensuring student success. Now therefore, let it be hereby resolved, the Davie County Board of Education, for the reasons herein noted, opposes any proposed legislation, including Senate Bill 236, that would authorize counties to assume control of school property, and respectfully requests that the North Carolina General Assembly oppose any such legislation during its... that the North Carolina General Assembly oppose any such legislation during its 2013 session. And the Davie County Board of Education opposes any proposed legislation that would fund vouchers or opportunity scholarships for private education that will divert funds away from public schools and for the purpose of retaining teachers, teacher assistants, and other support positions and resources to support instruction. The motion was made by Clint, it was seconded by Chad, and now it's time to vote. All in favor of the resolution, please show a raise of hand. Five. All opposed? Two. The resolution passes 5-2. Thank you for the discussion and everyone sharing your information. Now it is time for public address to the board.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have two speakers, so if we could have our first speaker come forward and then our second speaker be on the ready, we'll be all set. You'll remember our rules, which is that you have five minutes to give us your thoughts, and we welcome them. You'll see the clock, I can't see it, but I know you can, on the floor, directly in front of you, which will keep you posted on what your time is. And we'd ask you not to refer to specific personnel matters or student matters and respect their confidentiality. If you have an issue that relates to personnel or to students, Mr. Wallace, who's about to raise his hand, will be happy to hear from you and let you address that in a more private and appropriate manner. So with that, if you will state your address when you get started, and we look forward to hearing from Mr. Hunt. And on deck will be Mr. Coles.
Good afternoon. My name is Dewey Hunt, Jr. Address 667 Sanford Avenue, Moxville, North Carolina, 28 years. What I am here for this afternoon, not to talk about any school matters, and I want to go on the record as this. I am a person, God-fearing person, and I will not hold or throw any stones against my brother knowingly. My mother always told me I would have problems, so you're good with your verbs, but the other part of the English language you have problems with. So I have done something, not knowing what I did, and I have my teeth glued on top of my mouth, so I won't slur anything. I do apologize. Carol, thank you for everything, you and Ms. Barbara. My granddaughter told me, says her name is Papa J, her name is Ms. Barbara. That lady started my granddaughter out, and my granddaughter's doing well now. But what I'm here for, I love Davie County. I love Davie County. I love the folks of Davie County. I have a daughter in this house here, adopted daughter from Davie County. Now, I do publicly apologize to Dr. Hartness for using the wrong word in his name. Let that be on the record, and I ask for your public apology, Doctor. And if you accept it, I really appreciate it, because we're gonna be together till we die, because my initials is D H and yours is D H, so if you will accept that, there's no way that I was, like any, trying to cut you down. I wouldn't, because you have a, you emancipated some minds here in Davie County when you went down to Coolme, and that was something that made me dear to you, and I thank you for that. I thank the board. Carol, I love you, and just don't carry a big pocketbook next time, all right? And I'll just continue to do so. If you accept my apology, please, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and our next and last speaker will be Mr. Coles. I'm sorry, I do that every time. Keep trying to put an N in there.
James Coles from Farmington. I want to thank everyone on the board, the staff, and the excellent teachers for this thrilling end of the year. It's amazing to me, and I am deeply grateful for all the work that you do. Even though we may disagree on new building issues, I still think that you do a terrific job in this county. And I would like to say that I don't really think we have to worry about vouchers in this county with the job you do. The other issue about vouchers is that they're really for poor people to have bigger choices in their lives. And this is a national issue, it's also a state issue. And Davie County isn't the issue here so much. It's when kids are trapped in failing schools and they need a helping hand up, and whether it's going to a $6,000 a year Catholic school or some other Protestant school, and I can work a little bit harder to help my kid get an achievement, I definitely want them to have the opportunity for a voucher. The other issue, last night at the Board of Commissioners meeting, it's a little different. It's very refreshing to sense the polite decorum here at the Board of Education meeting. Although you might call it heartwarming last night, I thought it was a more raucous bedlam by some of the new school supporters, especially as they drowned out some of the commissioners. Now, the former chairman of this Board of Education complained about the county system of public speaking. I think you have an opportunity with this nice big sign and a procedure that you can help the Board of Commissioners solve this problem, perhaps with your attorney, according to the North Carolina statutes for public speech. The other thing that you might consider learning from the Board of Commissioners is that an issue such as business item number six, a resolution in opposition to proposed legislation, very comprehensive, but there's no information about it coming to the board meeting, and the public address happens afterwards. So there's no public input to this kind of decision. We do appreciate your agenda being printed out for those of us to participate. I wanted to emphasize that when we question an architect's proposal, we are not attempting to demean an architect. In fact, there are noble architects, but obviously, when you're in business, you want to succeed in business, and your proposals may be self-serving. Little architects showed that we could get all the mobile units removed and add 28 new classrooms and new administrative and guidance offices for just 5.5 million. Now, for up to 55 million, we're gonna have a big project, which is 10 times the cost. And you cannot be indifferent to the costs of these things, even though you're for the children. Being for the children also means being for the single parents, the intact families that are working two jobs to support their children, the grandparents, single people, those of us who children have been already raised, who are living on fixed incomes, the folks who are aged and need a new ambulance system, two new ambulances in this county, an eight-man crew of paramedics to man them, additional sheriff protection and protection within the school districts as well. So we're all in this together, and you need to take into account the fact that there's a huge cost. Now, Little recommended at least $100 million over 10 years to upgrade all Davie County schools. This is a 20 cent per hundred increase in our tax rate, from 66 cents to 86 cents, a 30% increase in everyone's taxes for the next 20 years. We learned last night how excruciating the budget was for the county commissioners. We also learned that our new tax rate to be revenue-neutral is going up from 62 cents a hundred to 66 cents a hundred. It might be time for you guys to consider Plan B. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our speakers for today.
Thank you. I would like to recognize a gentleman that walked in, Terry Renninger, one of our commissioners. Thank you for being here, and we are glad to see you. Thank you. It's time for the committee and staff reports.
You can start smiling now. I have great news to report, and I am joined by Dana Roberts, who is the chairperson of our Art Smart Festival, and I just want to be sure that we get to recognize her properly. We have a great thing happening. You see on the screen that there is a program that's being aired by Yadtell, and it does a good job of summarizing the Art Smart Festival. So we're going to watch just a few minutes of this, perhaps about a minute, and right after that, I'm going to give you some statistics that will help you understand the range that we covered this year. This was produced by Yadtell for us.
Today here in Davie County, we're celebrating our third annual Art Smart Festival. Every year, we invite all of our community, all of our amazing artists, all of the students, our faculty, and all of the teachers, administration, and Dr. Hartness, we all join together, and we celebrate the arts. And during the festival, you'll find all different kinds of things going on. We've got our theater department performances, we have our combined elementary chorus performance, our band, lots of hands-on visual art activities, we've got a pottery wheel demonstration going on, and this year, we've really tried to focus on how the arts bring the families together. So most of the activities that you'll find here at the festival are highlighting the ways that we can share art as a family. Lots of painting, and definitely some good dance, dance instruction.
This is our third annual Art Smart Festival, and the really great thing is, it's all the arts teachers from every single school in Davie County, and they're very proud of their student work, and it's a time for us to showcase the student work. So we have student work from kindergarten through 12th grade, and we have some early So this will be available for you to watch on the Yadtell network. It's going to be played several times during each week, and we're very excited. The entire video is approximately an hour, and we were very excited about the turnout this year. Ms. Roberts was able to coordinate a lot of out-of-school adventures for the children in terms of actually producing the art, taking it with them, mothers and fathers being involved with it. I had all kinds of participants for my creative movement class, from moms and dads to little teeny children. It was really fun. I want you to know that we had over 600 guests who actually signed in, and we assume that we missed about 200 more. Over 300 students were participating. We displayed 215 artworks. 10 band, chorus, and musical theater performances were included. We had four short skits and monologues, five dance performances, art production and demonstration of pottery, portrait making, print making, Chinese brush painting, bird studies, and Japanese sumi ink painting. I would like to personally thank Dana Roberts for her tireless efforts and her ability to so graciously share leadership. Artists are not the easiest persons to put together on an endeavor. They all think that what they're doing is terribly important, and they are very passionate. And so it takes a certain skill and level of understanding to make that come into a beautiful whole, as Ms. Roberts did, so please join me in thanking her.
I personally want to thank you, because I did tell all four of my grandchildren, and when they got home, they were still doing all the arts and crafts and the dances and everything. And you have to understand, this is from a four-year-old all the way up to a 13-year-old, so you did bring the families together, and thank you so much. It was an awesome day.
We are so proud to have the talented teachers that we have in our system. So now you're going to watch me switch my hats, and I'm going into STEM mode. The wonderful thing of entities coming together has happened for us. We have the privilege of working with PTEC, which is the Piedmont Triad Education Consortium, which provides a lot of our professional development, and we are strong partners with them. But they stepped in in a very big way this year, and with the Center for Educational Research, Teaching and Learning, Excellence in Research, Teaching and Learning, which is part of Wake Forest University, we have solidified a partnership, which is very exciting. It is focused around STEM activities. We now have 17 teachers signed up for the 20 slots, and this is really through the efforts of Dr. Danny Carter and John Marshall and Donna McNeil, and we are working very hard to pull a variety of teachers together. This will give our teachers access to over 100 cases. The cases are learning opportunities that Wake Forest University produces. So it's about a $600 per person professional development, and we are not having to pay anything for each of these 17 teachers. That is through the generosity of PTEC and a joint opportunity with Davie Foundation and Meben Foundation. So we've had a gathering of both expertise and generosity that is just rarely found, and I'm very, very happy, very proud of my colleagues for helping us pull this together. Very excited, because these are the teachers who are gonna take us into the preparation for kids who will naturally gravitate toward the STEM Center. So we're building the groundwork. The STEM Center will also be very much benefited by the STEM Pipeline Camp, which will go on this July 8th for two weeks, and we are nearing about, we're more than halfway there, but we have a lot of kids who had plans previous to our announcement, so this will be a year of really gearing up. And as you met Mr. Don Tabit last meeting, he is so fired up. He's got everything ready, and materials are being purchased. Again, I want to thank my team for pulling this together with Mr. Tabit. It just cannot be done without all the effort that goes into it from various individuals. So I bet that in August, we're gonna have some pretty fascinating things to report to you, and in July, I'm gonna come back and remind you to come and visit us at the STEM camp. So I just want to let everybody know that we are well on our way, the arts in STEM are alive, and we could call it STEAM, but you know, we're just gonna kind of keep them rolling along in parallel efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Hartness. You have before you this evening the donations report for June, and I do want to point out, we heard earlier this evening from Jane Simpson about the Davie Community Foundation grants and the different organizations that are going through the foundation to deliver funds to the schools. And you'll see on this report, especially if you'll look at Davie High School, you'll actually see, and that's on page four, you'll see that there were several of those mini-grants from that organization called the Three Musketeers Education Fund. You'll see those mini-grants. One of those mini-grants paid for the U.S., where is that at? I'm trying, okay, the Skills USA competition. In order for those students to attend that competition, to pay that fee, to attend that competition, they were able to do that with one of these mini-grants that they received via the Davie Community Foundation. You'll also see there were quite a few Odyssey of the Mind donations that went through Davie High School, again, so that that group could go through, onto, to the world championship. And again, you'll see what Noel just spoke of, the Grant for the STEM Pipeline Summer Camp that came from the Meben Foundation and the Davie Community Foundation. Camp, that came from the Meven Foundation and the Davie Community Foundation. We are still receiving at Coolemee Elementary, we are still receiving donations in memory of Mary Hendricks. They also received a great donation this past month of 40 gallons of paint, which was very exciting for them, that they will use to be painting their school. I just want to point these few things out. These items here total in excess of $160,000 that have been contributed in the past 11 months from members of our community. And there are, just for, so you're aware, there is a lot that goes on in our schools that would not be occurring without the help of our community and the members of our community. That's our donation report.
Thank you. Any questions, Deborah? Okay, great. We are now where it's Board comments, and I believe Chad, you're first this evening.
Thank you. I would like to, I'd like to first congratulate all the folks that were recognized tonight. And I think the comment's already been made, someone over earlier has already said this, but I think it's a testament to Davie County Schools and its staff, all the awards, and this community, too, frankly, that we are striving for high goals and reaching them. And we, Davie County has a lot to offer. We've got a lot of, a lot of smart folks here in our community and very willing to participate, and I'm very thankful to live in a community like that. I would, I would like to, also like to thank all the support that has been given to this board over the last few months, in, as we've worked through this facilities issue, specifically this high school issue, and all the support that was at the commissioners' meeting last night. On behalf of the plan and the board, I just want to thank all those folks. And I want to thank everybody for coming, and it's always nice to see a packed house. And I think that's all I have.
I'm not really going to duplicate Chad's statement. Just want to thank everyone for coming out. Dewey, great job. That was, that was great. As far as, like Chad said, I think all of us appreciate more than folks will know, and I have a tendency sometime to think it, I don't have to make a comment and thank folks at our meetings, but people are watching this on TV now. We caught that the other weekend at my house. So I do want folks to realize, and I know a lot of folks who aren't here this afternoon, who have spent a lot of time and effort over the last couple of months with high hopes for last night, know they're home with their, with their families. And just, just want to extend our thanks, and congratulations to everybody who's wrapping up the school year. I know if you're half as excited as my kids are, you can hardly stand it. So anyhow, just thanks, and have a good evening.
In 2012, Wendy and Clint and I campaigned and ran to get on this board, and we were elected by the folks to do that. One of the things that was heard regularly whenever all three of us were talking, and even on our trip to Raleigh, that was kind of eye-opening to all three of us, I think. We talked about wanting to do everything that we could, to keep everything as open and as transparent, and to try to win some trust that seemed to be, have failed in the community as far as their respect for the school board, et cetera. And then just recently, there's this issue with the bill to remove some of the school board's duties, and it has nothing to, I don't think it has anything to do with Davie County. It has to do with some problems that happened elsewhere, and we're being lumped into that for whatever reason, and other, other systems are, too. To my knowledge, this board, in concert with staff and administration, has worked to the benefit of the school system. To my knowledge, we've been open and transparent. I believe the public is aware of the work and the actions of the board. I believe that we have listened to people and responded to people. I believe that some of that sense of responsibility of this board and transparency is, and trust is growing. I want to see that continue. We're coming up to the close of a school year, and I think the school board work that we have to do in the summer will still continue. I don't know what all is coming up, Barbara, because I'm still, I haven't been through a summer yet. I'm a rookie at this. I believe accurate information all the way through, without trying to sway opinions, but give accurate information so that when this vote does happen, I think it's vital. I think for people to be able to decide for themselves based on facts and truth is incredibly important for this either new high school to actually happen, or whatever else is going to happen if that doesn't happen. To me, that's just real, real important. The rec, and back in tonight, recognitions tonight, congratulations to all the students and teachers and advisors for taking opportunity to work hard to get through that and to get the great results, which is a representation of Davie County Schools. I'm proud to be a part of this body, supporting the school system and getting the results that we all enjoy and that we heard about tonight. Chad, thank you for echoing that. Proud for the, proud of the staff and the teachers for all the work that's done from pre-K all the way through 12th or 13th to get the accomplishments that we do in the county. Thank you all for attending tonight. It's important that you're here and that you're heard, and that we respond to those thoughts and feelings and things that we hear. Thank you.
As we, I'm sitting here thinking, as we come in the end of a school year, it's also the end of our first year, which is crazy, to say the least. And you would think that a year in, you would actually feel like you know more than you did a year ago. And I think of it, I don't know if I know less, or I just realize that I know less. But just about the school system, and it's just, it's been in a blur with the year. But like Wendy and others have said, thank you for all the, all the support and the input, and thank goodness for, for teachers and educators that just dig in and go about your business. So anyway, hopefully, the school system is better somehow, because we're here. So, and just look forward to the next, next year, and have a great summer.
I just want to congratulate all those that were recognized tonight, or this afternoon. A lot of hard work, winning those accomplishments. I want to thank each one of you that have sat through this meeting tonight. Appreciate your support. And I just want to say I thank you, all our staff, our teachers, teacher principals, assistant principals, all those folks that work in the schools that, I know it's been, it's a tough job day to day as we, as you work with these young people, different situations. You do a great job. I'm proud of you, proud of the Davie County Schools, and hope you have a wonderful summer. Thanks.
I know this gets repetitive, but I, too, want to thank everyone for being here. Mr. Hunt, I so appreciate you standing up and saying that. That was just such an honorable thing to do. Dr. Knowles, I appreciate you, too, as well. I, I feel that you were, you know, it is a respectful tone, and I really like the fact that we have that here. Also, I'm glad that Commissioner Renninger is here. And I think, just to, he probably doesn't need me to do this, but I think you were saying he was addressing, seemed to address some issues with how they handle their public speaking, and I didn't, I felt like he was not complaining about it, but looking for a definition, as we have here. So I think the commissioners need to kind of study how we, we do this. We have a process. It's in place, everyone knows about it. What I saw last night was a kind of a group that didn't really know what was in place and how that was handled. So I'm hoping that they will take from us and learn how to handle that. The retirement dinner, I, you know, my mind is a little bit, getting old, but I think that was prior or after our last board meeting. So I want to say, it was an amazing retirement dinner. The students, for those of you that do not know, did all the cooking, they did all the flower arrangements, the entertainment. And I've been to a lot of retirement dinners, and it was top-notch. The food was outstanding. The culinary department did an amazing job. Karen Farrell and her group with the agricultural did the centerpieces for the tables, and they were beautiful. Then the entertainment was Elaine Snow's choral performances provided throughout the whole evening. It was wonderful. So we are very blessed to be in Davie County. This is the one time of the year, well, maybe there's even a few more, that I wish I was still about 16, 17, because can you just not remember those feelings of it, that's the last day of school, and how exciting that is, and how you don't feel that anymore when you get old, and that feeling kind of goes away. But matter of fact, some moms are probably saying, shoot, it's the last day of school. But it, I, I hope you all have a very safe and wonderful summer, and spend lots of time together with your families and to our staff. I know you're going to continue to work hard, but we thank you for everything that you do for this county.
Thank you. Each of you have touched base on everything, especially the retirement reception. At first, I asked Jean, who catered, and then she said, look at the back of your program. And when it's your high school students who catered everything, that was, it was a tremendous evening. And what was so special was to see those retirees who had given so much to the children getting back from, the children giving back to them. It was wonderful. I'm going to close with just a few thoughts. And number one is very simple. I've been an educator for all my life, 32 years in public education. I've had several years in preschool and daycare before that, and then five years in church preschool. So I've been around educators for a long time. I've had the opportunity to work with so many groups of people. But this is the first time in a long time I am very concerned about public education in North Carolina. I am very deeply concerned, and I want everyone to stand up, stand up for public education. We have taken cuts after cut after cut, and then it said, we're not doing our job. The people in this county, when we took cuts, stood up to the plate and took more responsibility. We said last year, when we went through the budget, that we hoped there would be a time that we could start adding back some of these people, some of these positions, to enhance the learning of our children. A long time ago, there was a dropout report back in 88. I know it's not online, it's probably somewhere out there floating around. But the key factors, out of Texas, I'll never forget reading it when I was getting my masters. The key factor in keeping kids in school was people. People. And this particular research project, these high school teachers had the responsibility to speak to 10 different students. 10 different students, not students that they had in school, but 10 different students. They did that. And that, after that year, there's the lowest dropout rate they ever had, and it was just saying, hi, how are you? You're looking good. I do want us to stand up for public education, and I appreciate the people who came last night to the county commissioners' meeting and stood up for public education, stood up for the children, stood up for the staff and faculty. We have top-notch. We have quality. We want to continue quality. I want each of you to have a safe summer and a happy summer, and I'm going to challenge you to learn something new this summer. That's what my teacher always used to tell me. And I will need a motion to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A3, to discuss personnel matters protected by state law, and North Carolina Statute 143-31811A6, to discuss student matters made confidential by North Carolina Statute 143-31811A, GS115C-402, and FERPA. Do I have that motion? Benny makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carol seconds. All in favor? We are now in closed session. Thank you so much for coming.